I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the
republic which stands
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh say can you see by the dawned early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose far strife sent bright stars through the perilous fight? Over the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Nice job, Sudrea Price from grade six, Worcester Arts Magnet School. Row call.
Member Alvarez.
Here.
Member Biancaria.
Here.
Member Benenda.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
Here. So we have the consent agenda under E. Row call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. We have, we'll come back to G. I'll go do the recognitions first. So we have the recognitions. Congratulate the Burnco High School spirit team and their coaches who placed them third in the nation at the Nationals. Congratulations. Ms. McCullough, yeah.
While they all start to walk in, I'll just say, you know, certainly the Burnco dance team alone has had great success over the last several years. But what was really exciting this year was that the Burnco dance and music programs combined, and they traveled to Florida together this year, certainly with a lot of great community support and hard work by their coaches and music teachers and the hard work that they all did together. And they placed third in the nation in Game Day Live, which if you haven't had a chance to see them perform, they are absolutely incredible. And we're all so proud of them. And, you know, definitely if you have a chance, there are some videos online if you hadn't gotten a chance to see them. But I don't know, now Mayor Petty, if you have anything you want.
What's that?
I've congratulated them more times than I can even count, but I'm so happy to even have them here tonight because they've all done such a wonderful job. And I'm so proud of them. And, you know, they really have just done so much to enhance community spirit, not only for their school, but our neighborhood area and the city. So congratulations to all of you.
Let's say congratulations also. You made City Worcester proud. Great job. And there's a community event. And made the whole city was behind you. So you did a really great job. And so I want to thank the coaches. And we have a couple certificates to give out. And this one is to Coach, dear Coach Shay, the Worcester Public Schools. And the Worcester School Committee would like to congratulate you on winning the 2024 Inspirational Dance Award. We could not be prouder of your excellent performance, your leadership and hard work and dedication to Worcester Public Schools students as not going to notice. Thank you for representing the Worcester Public Schools in such fine fashion. Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Okay, we have some certificates to hand out. Our first is to the head coach Kelly Shay, Burnco High School Spirit Dance Team, through a successful 23-24 season. Your dedication team, many of your customers have not gone unnoticed. So head coach Kelly Shay. We also have assistant coach Justine Panucci, with a certificate of recognition for the Burnco High School Spirit Dance Team for a successful season also. Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Congratulations. We have our band director Meredith Lord. It was a little bit different. It says, "For leading the Burnco High School pep band through the successful 23-24 season." Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Congratulations. We have our assistant director Andrea Cook. For, also for the Burnco School Pep Band for the 23-24 season. Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Great job. Congratulations. Okay. Let's see how many names I can get wrong. Okay. Yep. So this way it reads is, "Worcester School Committee Certificate of Recognition presented to the student for the following accomplishments during the 23-24 season. JV State, second place. Fosse-Ti Jazz, second place. Fosse-Ti Hip-Hop, third place at the national level. And third place in hip-hop, fifth place in jazz at the New England Championships." Signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. And our first person to present it to is Cole Aberbos. Was everybody in order? We have, next is, was it Aiden Bartley? Congratulations. Allison Bolduk. Allison. Ruby Bolduk. Congratulations. Okay. Is it Sharae Corret? Sharae. Tegan Donovan? Congratulations. Savannah Givener? Congratulations. Brianna Jimenez? Brianna? Is it Anna Kakoras? Grace Kelly? Congratulations. Tess Lambert? Angelina Rabasa? Is it Yara Selly Reyes? Cindy Sizdlick? Sedwick? Riley Volotico? Okay. Camry Ababio? Is it Josiah Berg? All right. Jaden Boards? Congratulations. Is it Safaya Carroll? Gianna Di Pietro? Okay. Mauricio Gomes Vela Nieto? Abigail Jones? Congratulations. Okay. Emma Seen Jones? Congratulations. Natalie Kleiner? Congratulations. Is it Kadrin Kay? Kay, I got it right the first time. Thank you. Nicholas Lewis? Congratulations. Okay, Maria Alvencia? Natalie Ossay? Congratulations. Daniel Park? Carlos Rivera Ozoya? Ozola? Ozola. Anna Ryan? Congratulations. Jared Shays? Congratulations. Delina Verdini? And Tiffany Wong? Congratulations, everyone, again. Great job. And Kelly, do you want to say a few words? No?
If I must. Well, I couldn't be more prouder of this group of students and then, of course, my fellow coaches. It was a big undertaking and these kids jumped in. And I actually just think it's created such an amazing bond in the age ring that didn't exist before. And I'm proud of you all.
I'm really grateful to the Worcester community.
Yes.
The Worcester community stepped up and really supported us. And we couldn't have felt more excited to represent Worcester this year because we just felt very connected and supported.
It was incredible. And then I know that they cannot wait to go back and do it all over again.
I just also want to really commend the scholars standing here in front of me. You're so incredibly talented. It is not easy to do what you do. It takes a tremendous amount of practice. I know that. I want to thank the coaches and all of your time. And I want to thank the parents because you made sure that they're there. You keep them on track. You make sure they get all their work done. To be in the fine arts field and to be a scholar and an entertainer and an artist just takes a tremendous amount of patience, dedication and perseverance. And so those skills are going to stay with you and really the sky's the limit. So thank you for representing Worcester so well. And keep making us proud because there's nothing you cannot accomplish. I saw that the first day that I visited you when I was interviewing. And I said, "My goodness, I certainly hope I'm the one that gets to be a part of this." So keep it up. Thank you so much.
Now, do you want to line up like you were before? Take a quick group picture? If you line up the same way you were, right in front, facing that way? So get close. Right about there, yeah, three rows if you can. Then we have the school. Can you come up on top? Are we all in? Okay, ready on three. One, two, three. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Keep it up. Keep it up.
You're all done for the year. Are you still dancing?
No, they're playing. They're practicing. No rest for the wicked.
Okay, well, the next item is G, which is a held item. Request that the administration provide an update on the safety centers, the elementary and secondary, including the criteria for entry, number of students referred last year to this year, including the report for the superintendent on March 21st, which is in the report. Any questions? The motion is to approve and to file. Also? Okay, so the motion is to approve and to file. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? We have public comment now, if people are here that want to speak. We have, any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before the committee for two minutes. And just state your names, your city of residence and the item number that you're speaking on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fred Nathan Worcester. I didn't really catch the number on it, but about the safety centers. Too many times in politics, people say a lot of stuff. But I hope that the idea of safety centers is really going to be truly what it means. A safety center. Secondly, I didn't really catch the number on the electric car chargers. Obviously, this is a work in progress still to get electric cars there because of the people that want to do away with gas engines. I get it. It's probably going to happen. Whether it happens in 10 years from now, who knows? But obviously, at some point, there will be electric cars everywhere. It will be like the Jetsons. There'll be George Jetson flying around. Who knows? You're going to see that before long. I could have sworn I saw him recently, but it is what it is. I must have been watching something and fell asleep and watching. Was that real? But anyhow, electric cars, it will happen. It is happening. And before you know it, George Jetson is not just going to be a cartoon.
Okay, anybody else want to speak on any items tonight? List your names, your residence, item number.
Hi, I'm Sandra Losco. I'm a resident of Worcester and I'm here to speak on the nutrition report for school meals. Okay. This past year, a group of parents at the Chandler Magnet School, La Familia, organized to get more information about the school lunch program. The voices of our children inspire this initiative because when you ask our children, "How is the food in the cafeteria?" Well, they're really very thrilled. They say things like, "It's terrible, bad, not good, dry and sometimes disgusting." If you ask administrators, staff or teachers, you will hear the same responses. It is very sad and disappointing. What you see written on paper on the school lunch, on the menus, don't really report on the district-wide school menu. It really does not reflect what is actually happening inside the cafeterias. There's a lot of food that is thrown away in the trash or not eaten. The food lacks variety and nutrition. The preparation and storage of some foods are done poorly. Staffing shortages have been a huge problem for years and years. Right now at our school, we have only two cafeteria workers for approximately 600 students. There should be five cafeteria workers and a head chef assigned to the school. That was actually information given to us by the Director of Nutrition. There have been reports of appliances also not working properly in kitchens across Worcester Public Schools, including our very own kitchen. So in order to be productive, we gave these concerns and decided to meet with the Nutrition Department. We have met twice with the Director of Nutrition and with Ashley Haynes to address some of these concerns about some missing food items, delivery miscommunications and staffing shortages. They have listened and are working on making changes. But this is just the beginning. Our children deserve better. The parents at our school want to change the school lunch menu to not only offer better quality food, but culturally relevant foods that represent the diverse student body of our school and the city of Worcester. I know we aren't the only school parents that want this for their children. Providing good nutritious food that students want to eat is critical to our students' overall health and academic success. How can we make the school food and lunch program a top priority? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody want, we're going to get to the petition in a second. This is a difficult? A public comment, okay.
Hello.
Hi. What's your name?
My name is Avasthal Grunwald. I am an eighth grader at Forest Grove Middle School and we are also here to talk about the school lunches.
Perfect.
I am with Lorela Leclerc, Avery Corey and Ava Django. Sorry. To start off, we want to say that we, for the past about eight or 10 weeks, we have been working on this civics project. We sent out a survey to all the students at Forest Grove, asking a series of questions. The questions we asked were, "How do you feel about your school lunch? Is your school food appetizing? How often do you eat your school lunch? Do you think school lunch has enough options? What types of food would you like to see at school? And what do you like best about school lunch and what changes you would like to see?"
Thank you. You pull right down. Yep, there you go.
So, how do you feel about your school lunch? We asked this question and we made it open-ended, giving students the ability to express themselves. Most of the common replies were things that went along the line of, "It's okay." A lot of them said that it didn't taste or look the best, but they had a good concept. Some of the responses were, "Our school lunch overall is okay, but compared to other schools, it could be better." And another was, "They're okay, but it's somewhat bland and does not leave us full."
Thank you.
How often do you eat school lunch? That was one of the questions we asked. You can, no. Out of 50% of the students that we asked, the responses said that sometimes they ate lunch out of the 53% out of 100%. 12.7% of the students said they never eat the school lunch. 34.3% of the 100% of kids said they eat it all the time.
Thank you.
We did some research about the Worcester school lunches and the Springfield school lunches. And basically Worcester is just like Springfield, just Springfield's smaller. And the Worcester Public School lunch menu does not, lacks the variation of different meals for different days. But on the Springfield school lunch menu, it has different options for kids who don't want to eat the same thing every single week.
We then asked a question in the survey, "Is your school food appetizing to you?" 75.4% of students at Forest Grove do not find the school lunch appetizing. It's not, they say that it's not appetizing at all and that's why they appear to not care about it. A large percent of the students that answered do not think the school lunch is appetizing enough to them because it could be your options or maybe how it looks to them.
All right. The solution that we want to propose is to make it more appetizing. We could add more options or different ingredients. One of our main ideas behind this was that we have a pretty big religious community here at Forest Grove and we have multiple students who, according to their religion, should not be eating the school lunches, but still want to eat the lunch. And if we, if the school lunches aren't appetizing and if the kids aren't eating, we're going through school seven hours a day, five days a week. So we want to make sure that students are getting the most out of their learning by staying awake and having their brains being filled enough, their stomachs aren't hungry. And I, we as a community believe that this will help not only grades improve, but kids' motivation to go to school.
While we as a community want to change the school lunches, there are some parts that we do like already and we wouldn't want to change. First off, we are eternally grateful about the freeness of the school lunches and that we don't have to pay. Second of all, students say that they like how nice the lunch staff is. They also say that they like the predictability of meals. And a lot of students say they like the most of the lunches. It's just some days it might not be the best.
All right. We appreciate your interest in our ideas, presentations and everything else that we have put into this. A lot of time and effort went through this, as I told you, for the past eight to 10 weeks. We would like to suggest a modification to our school lunch program with this presentation. Our class, school and community thinks and knows there's room for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anya and I'm an eighth grader at Forest Grove Middle School. And today, before I start, I would like to say thank you to everyone for having us here. And today, we're going to be talking about having electric car chargers on campus.
Let me just read that real quick. And we have a public, people should know we have a public petition that you brought here to the Worcester School Committee. So thank you for going through the process. And it says, "Consider adding electric car chargers to the Forest Grove Middle School parking lot free of charge in partnership with Mass EV IP." So thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your name and go ahead.
My name is Anya Zirka and we're from Forest Grove. Next slide.
My name is Micah. I'm going to be presenting the topic of our presentation. Why did we decide to install electric car chargers at our school? It's for the reason that climate change is affecting our planet. Constructing this project will make us one step closer to making our planet more environmentally friendly and safe planet.
Climate change. Climate change is affecting the earth more and more every day. Animals and plants die because of the weather changes every day. And soon people will be affected by this too. Why we chose electric vehicle chargers? Having electric vehicle chargers could encourage people to buy electric cars. This helps the environment become cleaner and safer. But also because there are many people who own electric cars and they could use these chargers for their own benefit. This way, people inside and outside of school could use this for their own benefit.
Hi, my name is Allison and I'm here with my group to discuss.
You can speak right into the microphone now?
Hi, my name is Allison and I'm here to discuss about electric vehicle chargers with my group. So at first, did you know that climate change is mostly caused by air pollution? About 2,780 deaths is caused by this manner in Massachusetts. Air pollution has caused many adult diseases, for example cardiovascular diseases, strokes and lung cancer. Our state, Massachusetts, lost almost 2 million performance IQs for the average child in 2019. Many children are affected with this manner, with coming into 15,386 cases of pediatric asthma and 308 low birth weight children are affected. 95% of air pollution in Massachusetts comes from the burnout fossil fuels resulting into more than 7,000 gallons of oil being burnt in a car's lifespan. The positive window for electric vehicle chargers is that they save around 60% or more money than gas-powered cars. In conclusion, the community should adapt to electric vehicles to reduce the environmental impact and promote the installation of electric vehicle chargers in the Forest Grove Middle School parking lot.
Good evening. My name is Yanni and I'm going to start off this presentation with a question. Do any of you own an electric vehicle? All right, so I'm going to be talking about the benefits of the vehicles and why you should get them. One benefit is it will help the environment. Gas-powered vehicles produce carbon emissions, which is a reason for climate change. EV vehicles reduce the amount of carbon emissions into the climate and are beneficial. Another benefit is noise reduction. Electric vehicles are not as noisy as gas-powered vehicles because they lack noisy internal combustions, engines. Lastly, electric chargers are always cheaper than gasoline, even in places where electricity prices are higher.
Hi, my name is Camden. I'll be talking to you about the price and the place we will put.
I'll be talking to you about the price and the place we will put the EV chargers. If you would grant us the permission to install the EV chargers, we have found a company that could give us the chargers for free. Although we could get the chargers for free, there is a chance we'll have to pay for the installation and the maintenance of the chargers. The company that could give us the chargers is Mass EV IP. We have the perfect place to put the chargers in the back of our school, and it is newly added parking spots.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Serena. In conclusion, we want to help people and the environment by putting electric car chargers on our campus. As we all saw on the previous slides, there are many reasons why we should make this project happen. We are really happy that we have the opportunity to present this project to you. We appreciate, we appreciate you giving us a part of your time and your consideration. If you have any questions, feel free to ask us. Thank you.
Hey, Elsa. Oh, nice job. Thank you, it was a great job tonight, and much appreciated, and Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I wanted to thank all the students who spoke here tonight, and I know that Mr. Degnan is here, and I believe maybe some other educators from Forest Grove. So, I know Member Guardiola encouraged the students to come on Nutrition and Speak during public comment, and this group had reached out about the electric car chargers, and the clerk helped them file the petition to get on. So I asked with the petition if we could send that to finance, operations, and governance. And I know that the students have a civics project forum coming up that I think we got an email on today, and if you hadn't had a chance to attend one of their project presentations before, it's really a wonderful opportunity, and the students do such excellent work. So I just wanted to thank you and ask that we send that item to finance, operations, and governance.
Sure. Thank you again, great job, great project. Which one gets to drive the chiron the first time when we do this? Okay, we're gonna send that to our committee, all those in favor, opposed, so order. Anybody else want to speak on any item tonight before we move on from this part of the meeting? Okay, seeing nobody else. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I just want to commend the youth for coming out. Tonight, our, the report of the superintendent is on college, being future-ready, and the vision of a learner, and you were, you modeled that without, because that's what you're doing in school each and every day. This is what the city of Worcester needs, is the constant advocacy, bringing your voice to the table. So you could not have teed us up any better for our presentation this evening. Thank you so much, and thank you for the adults who are behind them, supporting them, because they don't do it without you, most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, so how the committee, committee meeting come up soon, you can come and testify and discuss your project in more depth at that time. Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else wants to speak, we're gonna go to the report of the superintendent. Vision of a learner in practice, college and career readiness. Madam Superintendent? I'm proud of doing so, remember being career?
Thank you. What I would hope that the students that would like to participate in attending the meeting, if they could register their name and address with our school committee clerk, so they would receive an invite when we do have the finance meeting. So if they are available and would like to attend, they can come to attend.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Okay, so, so I want to first thank the team for pulling this presentation together. They gave a lot of thought to how to really showcase and give a glimpse of what's been going on in the district. As a reminder, last school year, we refined the vision of a learner with a really large net of stakeholders. We talked to families, we talked to superintendent student advisory, we brought our principals in K-12, and, and vision of a learner really was birthed. And then, we selected Wildweckus Road Elementary School to be our first school that would be our beta for taking the vision of a learner and putting it into practice, what we refer to as the Spark Academy. We also have Spark teachers throughout our district, so it's not just at Wildweckus, but Wildweckus is our school that we're using to really think through, how do we take this at a district level? What are the systems improvement that we need? What system structures, and then how do we improve upon them? So you'll see some of that this evening, but the vision of a learner, it does not sit in isolation, this is really important. We have to align that work with the pathways that we offer our youth, and that those pathways are opportunity for future mobility. Because our role as a public institution is to take every child and make sure that when they graduate and they're moving on to their next step of adulthood, that they have the tools and the opportunity and the access to thrive. That's what brings then the economic prosperity for Worcester, and really supports the individual child, the local community, and the state and nation as a whole. So this team that's going to be presenting has taken on a huge endeavor, very, very appreciative of their work. We'll wait for the ambulances to go by. Because what you'll hear, and you'll start to see glimpses of, and this is what I want actually the committee to really listen for, is that we're working to go from being a district that houses 46 schools, to being a school district that offers opportunity and access for all our scholars. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris. Thank you very much.
Dr. Morris?
Thank you, and good evening. We're delighted to be here this evening to share with you the report of the superintendent. We're gonna try a few different things tonight, so please bear with us, we have some videos and some testimonial from some of our students. So I'd like to introduce my colleagues to my furthest left is Chris Kursonis, he is the administrative director of college and career. And Dr. Sarah Curriasis, she's our director of ed tech, and also serving as a principal of Wildweckus Elementary Spark Academy this year. So, next slide please. So through every report of the superintendent, we'd like to ground it into the goals of the superintendent and the strategic plan. And we believe the report of the superintendent this evening will hit upon many of these important endeavors of the district. You will hear more about vision of a learner, you'll be hearing about rigorous coursework, and hopefully, a lot will be learned about student engagement currently in the Worcester Public Schools. Next slide. Oh, you're doing, okay. The most important piece today that you'll be hearing about from the strategic plan is the equitable resources in educational programs. And as you know, if you've seen our strategic plan, there are three major aims with this initiative, and you'll be hearing more about each one of them. Consistent learning experiences, students and scholars exercising agency and choice in their pathways, and also more about future ready learning. So this evening, the school committee, we hope that you will learn more about the progress we've made as a district, towards our shifts, towards a future-ready instructional district, and also learn about the development of many learning pathways that are now available to our students. As the superintendent mentioned, we just wanted to bring you back to where we began with this work. We began with the portrait of a graduate, and we brought a lot of stakeholders forward and worked upon with committees to come up with our final iteration and version of the vision of a learner. A lot of this was in response to the rapid acceleration and changing landscape of innovation in our country and in our world today. And in addition, Dr. Menares spoke urgently about the needs of our changing world, and how we as a school district must align our vision to meet those needs. You'll hear more also about, and we did speak to you about a year ago, the shifts and changes. You will be hearing tonight more about, and see some of the shifts and changes in instruction and assessment, the competency, skills, and knowledge our students must be exposed to, and how we're learning in different spaces and using a variety of different types of tools. But rather than tell you about it, we thought we'd have some other important people in our district tell you about it, our students. So we're gonna hear from some of our scholars on some of the initial vision of a learner integration. I need to turn this off and turn this on, so bear with me one minute.
I'm a problem solver. My sixth grade class built a lost and found at our school to fill a need at our school. In the future, I'll know how to address problems by working together in groups and being on the same page.
I am a curious learner. In the library, I worked with a group of my peers to retrain an AI model to be less biased. This project feels important to me because I know it'll help empower our future.
I'm an empowered ambassador. Our first grade class learned about ways to stay organized and using assignment trackers for our faculty unit. Organization to make us more independent so we can be in charge in our own learning.
I'm an effective communicator. My fifth grade class worked in groups to write and record presentations, essays to make changes in our school. I think if you, you have an idea and just let it sit there, no one will know your idea, and maybe your idea can change the future.
An engaged community member in my first grade classroom, we learned how to write our own group norms before we collaborate. This helps me include everyone in my, in the group, and better understanding what they need, may need help in. It helps us empathize with each other.
Okay, some sound manipulation. So, these students are from La Familia Chandler Mag, Burncote Middle School, City View Elementary School, Roosevelt Elementary School, and Wildweckus Road School, and these are all students that are taught by some of our Spark teachers in the district. So this is some of our initial work. We wanted to, you to hear it from them. As Dr. Menares said, you also saw Forest Grove, which was a great addition to that. We were, I was checking off all the indicators that I heard. So I'm gonna do something a little different, like I always try to do. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about joy in learning. So, if you can bear with me, humor me, if everyone could close their eyes for a minute, and I want you to imagine back when you were maybe five, or 10, or 15, and think about a time that you really, really enjoyed school, something you really remember, and just to hold that with you, I'm gonna give you a little teacher wait time. If, if you didn't have a happy experience, think about something that would have made you happy learning in school. Okay, you can open your eyes. I want you to hold on to that thought as we go through this presentation, and I'd love to hear from a few of you on, on what that experience was. We asked this question, when I went to Wildweckus Road, I asked every single educator this. We've asked principals this, we've asked teachers across the district this, so they can hold on to some of that joy in learning, and think about those experiences. What it always comes down to, and you can think about this if this relates to you, is something that you did in school where you had a relationship with an educator, with someone else. So social relationships, a hands-on experience where you're really digging in and doing something that you really enjoyed. It could have been a project, a video, a play, music, some type of performance. And then the third thing I always hear is some type of relevance or meaning in your life. So it could have been Sparks, like maybe you had an experience and you loved the teacher so that, you know, got you into teaching, or maybe you were able to build something in your engineering class and now you're an engineer, something like that. So it's always something along those lines. These translate into sense of belonging that you have in schools, student engagement, and student opportunities, which is what the vision of a learner is really trying to encompass. So as Dr. Menares said, we are moving to a school district, and one of the strategies that we're working on are really coming up with a holistic pathway of pre-K to 12 plus and beyond. And this consists of future-ready skills that you can see in the vision of a learner, and then career and college pathways. We have some listed here, and we're really trying to build out more, especially in the primary and intermediate. I'm gonna turn this over to Chris Kursonis, who's gonna give you an overview of some of these pathways, and then we're gonna wrap it back around to the foundation for these pathways for the district.
Thank you, Dr. Curriasis. So, just to kind of start this, we have the vision of a learner, which is the end result that we want to see for our students. The idea of what you maybe have heard through education, the idea of backwards design. What are we doing all the way back from where we want to see our kids when they graduate? What do they do all the way back through school? High school, middle school, elementary school, pre-K, kindergarten? And those are skill sets that we're building. They're gonna learn subject matter throughout academics certainly, but there are certain skill sets that they're gonna build off of because of success and failures in the classroom. They're gonna have learning opportunities, which we experienced and saw today. So the pathway key priorities, we have nine that we looked at, that's gonna help build us this pre-K to 12 pathway, which is really in existence, it's just a lot of people need to know about it, and we need to build on it, make it stronger, make it equitable, and make it something that we're very proud of here, because I think we're doing a lot of those things, we're hearing about them in bits and pieces, but we really are doing great things on a day-to-day basis. So these nine key priorities, the first three go hand-in-hand. You have curriculum instruction, obviously we're gonna have curriculum that's built around what we want to do in the classroom, how we want our students to learn, and it's very important that our teachers are doing the very best job that they can in the classroom, and that they're prepared. Professional development is given to them, and they're given the opportunities so they can be successful, so their students can also be successful. We have college preparatory programs, a lot of this revolves around our advanced placement, early college, and multiple dual enrollment options with local colleges. Currently, we offer 25 advanced placement courses, and we also have a number of our classes that we'll see after, around career development as well. We also have support from our guidance counselors, doing amazing job day in and day out, also our regular adjustment counselors, and then we have programs that help us through Mass Edco, upward bound, bottom line, gear up, all helping to support our students make good decisions about their futures. The third one there is that career guidance and exploration. We're doing a lot of that more and trying to pull that back into the middle schools, working with them so they're prepared. We talked about giving them an avenue in sixth grade, seventh grade, so they're making decisions that are important to them and not just, maybe I want to go do this in high school. I mean, my own kids don't know what they want to do sometimes when they go to college. So what do you want to do with them? How can we prepare them better to get a bigger percentage of our students that are aware and making conscious decisions for their own benefits based on who they are as people, how they want to learn, and what they want to do? So those are all part of that. The other pieces from there is the assessment and data. We need to know what we're doing and how we're doing it. How well are we doing with this? Do we need to retool it? Are we doing great? Should we keep it up? And how do we get better, is the bottom line? And then the rest of those pieces all fall in line with that support staff. We obviously need resource allocation, there's support services that are there, family and community engagement. We're, we're working really hard to bring that to schools, to bring families in to see what we're doing in our opportunity fairs in middle schools, open houses at the high schools, producing some videos for our programs, and letting everybody know this is what we're doing, and, you know, you need to support your students and appreciate they want to do that, helping them understand. Our families understand what it is that our kids are doing too. And then obviously, technology integration, we want to be on the, on the leading edge of technology. We want to be able to give that to our students. We have a lot of offers from a lot of people that want to help us, so we need to find that and put that together. And then some success tracking, which would be, you know, how well are we doing once they graduate? Where are these students? Are they going to the job force? Are they going to college? Are they lasting in college? What do their success plans look like? And are they helping out back in the city of Worcester where we need them? So that's important to us, and then, once we have all that information, you do a little bit of policy review, and you read an update, and you begin to move forward with the next steps to make it better each and every year, so. You can see here at the high school levels, we have the vocational programs between Worcester Tech, and we have nine programs next year that we'll have, with the addition of three new programs at Doherty High School that we'll see in a minute for vocational. We have the Innovation Career Pathways Program, which is an extended day program from 2:30 to 5:15 for students during the second and third quarter that choose to attend that. Over 150 students, we have seven different programs they can choose there. And then we also offer from the academic side, early college classes where students can go to colleges to take classes, which is really important to get them on campus, as well as take some of those classes at school, and then, very importantly, our advanced placement classes, and you can see the numbers of students. We have thousands of students that are taking advantage of multiple opportunities to be successful. And then this is just the STEAM pathways, if you look, I think the key words there, we want our students to be exposed to things, then to explore them, select what they want to do, and then deepen that knowledge, so they're going to make decisions about going into career and college before they leave us, so they can ask us the question, so we can support that, and find out if there's any holes in their, their growth and that whole backwards design model of, did they miss a step? Did they not, you know, were they not successful in how they wanted to be, and setting short and long-term goals for themselves to do that, so. And then this is just something that we've, we've worked on. And then this is just something that we've worked on with our office. You can go through those. We plan to put this together at some point in time. We do have this in color, in school colors also, but be able to put this out there to our families and to our students, and have this at our schools, and have this readily available on our website, that these are the programs. This is what we offer in terms of our Chapter 74 programs at the North and Dougherty District, and then we also have South and Burnco. And with the new build on Burnco, we're already having discussions about what we want to put into that strategically. One of the big things is, you know, if that happens in five to seven or seven to 10 years, jobs that we currently have, programs we have, might be obsolete by that time. So it's that outward thinking, and it's also appreciating what we saw in front of us tonight with the arts program as well, music appreciation, and working towards the program we have with Chapter 74 there also. This is the programming at Worcester Tech, which I think everybody's a little more familiar with, that we have there, and all the great things that they're doing as well. In each one of the academies, they produce 23 programs in opportunity. And then the Innovation Career Pathways, with Dr. Emily Lehman is in charge of that. We have advanced manufacturing, allied health, biotechnology, business marketing, computer science, IT, and I know somebody brought that up previously, is it goes into cybersecurity, and also construction and engineering. So we have a lot of ways for which students can get an opportunity to experience a look at the industry. Test out what they want to do. Maybe they didn't get into one of the programs. Maybe they didn't want to do one of the programs. Maybe things change as they became sophomores and they really became interested. So it's again, another opportunity before 10th, 11th, and 12th grade for three years to be a part of this program. And then we're gonna hear from Nick and Maria, two of our students who have taken advanced placement and early college classes, and there's a nice little video, and what has done for them. Nick is a Burnco graduate, and then we have Maria who attended New Citizens Center and GCC as well.
I'm Nicholas York, and I got involved in early college at Burnco High School. I started taking early college classes during my junior year when I was interested in taking communications. Before taking that, I didn't even know that you could study film at the college level, because that wasn't offered in my high school course catalog. I continued to take early college classes throughout high school, and now I'm in the Early College Promise Program, the fifth-year extension program, where I've continued to learn more about my interests and what I might want to study in college. Now I know that I'm gonna be pursuing film when I attend Cornell University in the fall. Early college has taught me so much about time management and communication. I learned how to talk with my professors and be less afraid of approaching them, and I learned how to manage my school responsibilities alongside work.
Hello, my name is Maria Graterol. I am in the Early College Promise Program. It was an unforgettable and amazing experience. This program has prepared me to be a responsible person and learn how to manage my stuff on time. This experience helped me to be a better college student and empowered me to improve my English, because it is not my first language. Thank you.
So again, it's great to hear from our students and what they're doing. We have currently 16 students in our Early College Promise Program. As mentioned before, we, in the last year, we grew our early college program by 50%, up over 1,000 students now taking classes. We're offering a variety all over, and we're also looking at adding advanced placement courses as well this year and years following based on students' need and interest. Certainly something that they want to do moving forward. So we have all of this programming to put together, and when I turn it over back to Dr. Karyazis about the next steps and about the innovation, we're looking at how we can do this for all of our students. We have students with, that are special education students, we have multilingual learners in the classroom, and they're taking these classes. They may not be necessarily 100% successful all the time, but we're learning how we can help them, support them, and showing them that they positively can achieve those things. And as we work through that, we are offering these programs to all of our high schools through the alternative programs, also all to the all-high schools, and they can attend all of them. And it's pretty amazing stuff that they have available to them. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Karyazis.
Thank you. So the next steps with sparking innovation. So as you all heard, we have the Wild Weakest Spark School, where we're working with staff in a design process, on a design team, in students to redesign Wild Weakest a little bit ahead of everyone else so that we can learn. But we also have the Spark teachers in the schools that are really incubating ideas between the Wild Weakest teachers and the Spark teachers in the schools, and so the innovation can move faster. So I'd like to invite Annie Cohn up to the microphone. She is one of the educational technology specialists, coaches in the Department of EdTech for the district, and she's one of the Spark leads that brings some district people together, the Spark teachers together, and is helping to spread the work from the school to, between all the schools. And so she's gonna talk a little bit about how we've kind of shifted our approach to professional learning to support future-ready schools and innovation in our staff. So Annie?
Thanks, Sarah. I'm also just hoping I do as well as the kids today. Ensuring that every Worcester Public Schools student leaves future-ready is really gonna rely on ensuring that all of the adults that they interact with throughout this process believe in future-ready instruction, have all the skills that will prepare them to implement future-ready instruction, and also are future-ready adults. So as we look back a little bit at the professional development we've done, we focused a lot of our energy on technology integration, and we've done a lot of work in our six years of I Teacher Program, with all of the work that we did to rapidly prepare teachers to do remote learning, and also in all of the professional development we've done in the last six years around blended learning instruction and models for blended learning. But we are also aware of the fact that the future is evolving faster than us, and that we need to think about professional development in some new ways. We need to be shifting our approach to focus on future-ready professional development. And what that looks like is professional development that is ready to stand the test of time, that is centered around practices and processes and systems in which teachers are able to apply practices to any subject, any context, any student, and they're really ready to shift as the world around us shifts very rapidly. Spark has been the process by which we've been sort of bringing Vision of a Learner to life. We want to ensure that we're not handing teachers another thing to do, that we're really creating a set of practices that they can latch on to and that they can dig their teeth into and really understand the how and the why of future-ready instruction. So Spark is there to create examples to prepare them for that. And so you've gotten to see some really great examples. I'm personally so proud of the work that our Spark teachers have been doing this year. And the first step of future-ready and professional development has really begun. We've wanted to work very hard to ensure that by the end of, sorry, by the end of the year, every educator will have the opportunity to have a real, at least, beginning understanding of the vision of a learner. And amazingly, we've already had over 1,300 educators participate in our Vision of a Learner awareness training. We're taking every bit of feedback they've given us and using that to build future professional development. And another step that we've got going on is that we're currently working on mapping Vision of a Learner directly into the curriculum so that there is clear alignment for educators and for our students, and that students are interacting with Vision of a Learner in a mapped way that involves lots of little touches all the way through their learning experience so that the student experience really creates Vision of a Learner opportunities to think about how those skills transfer across content areas and across grades and across subjects so that students are able to see this as part of their ongoing life experiences. So thank you so much, but we're very excited about where we're headed.
Thank you, Annie. So if you think about a student's educational path from the time they enter the Worcester Public Schools, which could be as early as preschool, three, three and a half, all the way up to some of our students stay with us through the age of 22. If you think, if you look at this roadmap and all these little markers, and you think about all these different markers, all the different courses they have, the experiences, could be after-school, summer, sports, athletics, performing arts, visual arts, all the different touchpoints they have, they, we want to infuse Vision of a Learner into everything. And that's where we're coming up with. The pathways is, you know, what is your path? What are your strengths and interests as a student? What can we provide to you from a very early age that can guide you to make those choices into your secondary schooling that will help you become someone that really has a joy of learning and a successful adult, however you define that. And so what we're working on is also taking, benchmarking some of these different experiences and opportunities into what we would like to have to be a portfolio, and we're gonna start piloting this at Wild Weakest next year, so that there's different touchpoints. So it could be in third grade, and then in sixth grade, and then in eighth grade with what you just saw up here. And so all the way, they're collecting artifacts of things that they've demonstrated that they've met some of the indicators of the vision of a learner. And so by the time that they do leave us, they have a rich portfolio that they can take with them, and they can talk about in relation to Vision of a Learner, that they can be proud of, and that demonstrate their skills and interests, and that also represent their whole learning journey throughout the Worcester Public Schools so that they can be prepared for a future that we can't even imagine could be in the next 12 years. So with that, I'd like to show you one last video. This doesn't have talking, so it'd be easier. The one thing I do want to say about this video is, we created this a year ago for the school committee presentation, but we only had stock footage, and we said, oh, maybe one day we'll be able to make this with our own students, and so we're really happy. Annie actually worked, and the rest of the team worked tirelessly to get all the videos, that these are all our students.
Spark a revolution in education. Be the change that transforms the way we teach and learn. Spark a passion for learning and curiosity. Spark a desire for lifelong learning and personal growth. Spark a love of literacy and communication. Spark a sense of purpose and relevance. Spark a spirit of collaboration and teamwork. Spark a dedication to wellness and self-care. Spark a willingness to take risks and embrace failure. Spark a curiosity to discover strengths and interests. Spark a sense of belonging and joy. Together, we can create a future-ready generation of learners. Be the change, be the spark.
So I'll go ahead and close up. So first of all, again, the intentionality behind the actions that have been taking place in the last year and a half, it's very palpable. These things don't just happen. The leadership that Dr. Karyazis has brought to Worcester Road Academy, Worcester, I'm sorry, Worcester, Wild Weakest Road Academy in Worcester, and what's been able to happen there in a very short amount of time is commendable. The work that Mr. Kressonis has started, he's only been here a year, I think it's probably anniversary this month sometime, really bringing things together. Intentionality in leadership really makes a difference, and it can transform, and it will transform our district. I, you, I heard, and I believe you heard, that we are really becoming an organization that is about learning, and not just the learning for the children, but the learning for the adults, and practicing continuous improvement, and having ways that we gather information from those who are going to do the work to improve upon what we do. And so this is just some of the work that needs to happen to make sure that every single child that graduates in Worcester Public Schools is ready for that, to be a thriving adult. And I want to close by saying, we can not only have this intentionality when we have the children with us in our walls, in our classrooms, but I had the opportunity to represent Worcester. Worcester was invited to the table, and I just returned today from New York, where we, the Harlem Children's Zone, and William Julius Wilson Institute, and Harvard Redesign Education, and Chiefs for Change Fellowship. There is a handful of districts throughout the nation that were invited to be part of this fellowship, and they want to partner with Worcester to close these opportunity gaps, not only in the classroom setting, because you can see, we're on the right track there, we know what to do, but also to support our youth outside of the classroom walls. What happens when they are not with us? What happens after-school, summer program? What happens on the weekends? What can youth development look like? And so I am extremely positive and optimistic about what's going to happen for Worcester and for the children we serve, because we know what to do in the classroom, and now we have this fabulous opportunity with some very strong partners to help us figure out, how do we make this, how do we wrap that, those necessary coordinated, comprehensive supports around our youth when they aren't with us, to make sure that they can thrive. And so there really is no limit to what Worcester Public Schools will do, and I can't wait to see what happens. So with that, I turn it over to you, Mayor Petty.
Thank you, Member McColl.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Morris, and Dr. Karyazis, and Mr. Kressonis for this presentation. You know, over the last few years, we've talked so much about these initiatives and objectives, and, you know, for years, we've had many of these different programs, but as you talked about through your presentation, there's been such an intentionality through a lot of the work that's coming together now, and the utilization of the support staff, and adding of some of the support positions that we have, and utilizing the Q teams throughout the district. And I've been so impressed when I've been out in our schools, always, but the past few years, just seeing so much of the hands-on learning and work that our students are doing, and the importance that you've discussed here tonight of providing that support to the educators as well, because we know how much our educators have on their plates each and every single day. But to make sure that we're providing them that support, so then the students then in turn are benefiting from these types of initiatives is just so crucial, because the world is changing, and the world is changing faster than we can plan for it. And I can tell you, as someone that is working in the corporate world, I was so impressed when I attended the Forest Grove Civics presentations recently, and the students were using SMART goals on their boards and their project boards, because that's something that we're using the same form in the corporate world, and that's how we're getting things done. And that's what companies and businesses are looking for when they're talking about their employees, when they're talking about whether a student is moving on to higher education or out into the workforce, how they're ready in different ways has changed. It has just changed so much. And seeing all of this going on and the intentionality around it is just, it's really exciting. And I'm so appreciative of the work that you're all doing, and excited to hear more about the Spark program as it continues. I know, Dr. Karyazis, you were mentioning the portfolio, and that's something that you've talked about from the beginning, that that would be a part of this project. So I'm excited to see next year with that being piloted a bit more, how that's something that students will then have to bring with them along the way throughout their educational journeys, but then in the future, as they're going out into the workforce or getting ready to go off to higher ed. My questions around the, this information that you said it will be provided for families when we look at like the pathways and curriculum and the STEAM pathways. So that's something we are going to focus on, making sure a student, family, I think you said it was a, it's this last, is that the field guide, or is that something different? Is the field guide more educator, through the chair? Is the field guide something that is more for the educators, or is that something that goes out to the families? And what type of guide is it that will have this information about the pathways for the families through the chair?
Through the chair. The field guide is actually something that I'm working on because we're taking Wild Weakest through a design, a human-centered design thinking process, the teachers and the students and the families. So it's part of this, we've kind of defined Spark as the process to get to the innovation. And so that field guide would be more for like a school leadership team focus. I think what you're, might be asking about is I think what you're, might be asking about is Mr. Christonas's, the, what he was talking about, the pathways, maybe? Yeah?
Through the chair. Correct. We will have those, we have guides for each school to have in each district, but it's also going to be avail, I mean, each quadrant be available for the district, because students will be able to apply to any program throughout the city. What we're looking to do there is to be able to show, we found that a lot of our students and families, they, they understand the name maybe of the program that they want to enter, but they don't understand what it's going to take to get to the end of that. They don't understand the classes they'd have to take, what it involves. So we're trying to be very intentional about that and make sure that students are making really good choices, better choices than they are now in seventh and eighth grade, to start choosing schools, because our, you know, between applications and students that are applying to their, the numbers for Worcester Tech and all of our programs get bigger and bigger and bigger. And we want to be able to provide something for everyone, but it's a lot easier if they specifically know what they want to do. We hear from a lot in the community and conversations is, you know, students may not be able to get into that. Families are tied to a specific trade and their, and their student didn't get in. Or what else do we have to offer that they could do that could be, and a lot of these, we want to make sure that it's about skill sets too. So they're learning a trade, but there's a skill set that can be transferable to other, other technical invocational backgrounds that they can be successful. And not only that, but just in life, being able to communicate, be able to work together. So that's what we're trying to do. And then you'd be able to see these, it's, it's pretty intentional about, this is specifically what you need to do, not just apply to a program because you think you want to do that and go there with your friends. This is what you will need to do by the time you're done and you'll get your certificate because you did all of these things.
That's excellent. Thank you. And I, I'm happy to hear both. I'm happy to hear that there'll be the educator, field guide, but then that, because I think that's something we have discussed for several years now, understanding what you need to do to get into certain programs at an earlier grade level and how important that is so you're preparing yourself and then you not only understand, but your family understands. And you, like you said, you're not just tied to one thing, it's giving you skill sets for other opportunities. There's one other thing that you mentioned that I just wanted to comment on that I'm, I'm happy to hear about and interested to see how that kind of manifests is, I know something we've always really wanted and we're trying to look at, and it was really a matter of how to best acquire the information, was tracking our students afterwards, right? It's, are they going into the trades that they're going to the school for? If not, what are they doing? If they're not a, if they're at a comprehensive high school, you know, what skills translated through where they went? And are they coming back into Worcester and how is that looking as well? So I do appreciate that that is being worked on more and look forward to seeing more of that in the future, because I know that's been really important for us to know what we're doing that's working, right? What we're doing that maybe needs to be done differently and how that's impacting our community as a whole. So I really appreciate the presentation and I'm excited to see more as we go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson, did you have your hand up? No? Yeah, Member Biancaria, Member Millman.
Thank you. First of all, I've got a couple of questions on the SPARC program. For the funding, are we looking at future funding for this particular program at Wild Weakest? Through the chair to administration.
Madam Superintendent.
So as of now, we're, we're, we have the funding that we need. We use Title IV to pay the stipend for the, the SPARC teachers and then putting it into the school we were able to use, I believe, ESER. But we are, we will make sure that that will be part of the overall budget that we bring forward in our recommendations.
Thank you. Ironically enough, I know everyone here on the school committee has heard me mention a number of times that if you SPARC the interest of a student, you are creating someone who wants to get out of bed in the morning, have motivation, go to school. So for years, I've been saying that, so I, I should have copyrighted that, that line. But I worked for a number of years for Worcester Public Schools as the district school to career coordinator. So I have a great deal of interest in the career paths that we have here. And I, I would request through the chair to administration that we look at the number of students that are enrolled in each of the pathways, whether it be the comprehensive or Worcester Technical. So we have a general idea of if there are 45 students that are in welding, if there are 20 students that are in carpentry. So we, as we look at our budget, we are then able to move funds around where it would be necessary if there's additional teachers that would be needed. So if we have a listing of the number of students per school per grade level, I think that will also help us with our budgeting for these areas, due to the fact that I'm very familiar with Chapter 74 in that it does have certain conditions and it does have certain barriers that have to work out in order to, for us to provide a pathway under that title. I'm very happy that we have built up to over 30 programs. I think this is the direction that we have tried to go and have continued to move forward on. When I originally was on the school committee, we had 12. So we worked up to 24. Now we're up to over 30. So I consider that success. And it's, we do have programs at every school. Ms. McCullough mentioned different pathways at different schools and the choices that we have throughout the city. Through, to administration, do we have any thoughts of school choice for high school years in opening the doors wider than they are right now to enable students who are looking at engineering but live here and the school is here? So that has been an issue for a number of years. And I'm a little curious on whether administration has widened those doors a little so we have the ability to say to a family who perhaps lives on one side of the city for an engineering program? Because we do have a number of students in our schools and I know that, that some of our classrooms are very full.
Dr. Morris?
Through the chair. That's exactly what we hope to be able to build. Where, what you heard in the presentation was student agency. And we want our students to experience early on experiences that would lead them to the decisions that they want to make regarding the variability in high schools that we have. So that's what we want to build. That's our goal. That's our destination. And it will take a little bit of time to get there, but we are working now to try to make these things a reality in the recent future.
Because when we look at this, we, thank you. When we look at this, it's not just at Worcester Technical High School. And we know we always have a waiting list there. And I am sure everyone sitting here on the school committee is going to either admit or not admit that most of the phone calls we get in the springtime are, my child would like to go to this particular school. So I'm not looking at Worcester Technical as a, as the school that they would like to attend. I would like to be able to branch out into the other schools and move some of these students around. We've had exceptional experiences. One of them, when I look at welding, we have a welding company here. The gentleman went to our schools. He has had a business for a number of years. His sons are now running the business. So there is not only a family history, but that same profession has grown into an engineering piece, not only just welding. So the engineering piece is huge. The other tie-in I was looking for is manufacturing. Is, we look forward to what engineering has. The idea of manufacturing obviously is very different than 20 years ago, 30 years ago to now. So it has a lot to do with technology. I've seen some amazing things built in a cubicle and the, for glasswork. So I'm a little curious in how we're tying in it, the manufacturing piece of all of this. I could throw that out?
Through the chair. We do have advanced manufacturing at Worcester Tech. And with that program, similar to colleges, when we bring in the universities to give us what they want from our students when they attend their colleges, we've asked also some of our businesses, we've had many roundtables where they've come in to tell us exactly what it is they need from our students if they're going to go into certain fields. We do offer advanced manufacturing though at Worcester Tech. It is a full program. And then we also have it in our Innovation Career Pathways program. And with the openings we would have down the road, as we get a number of requests from the area, especially with biotech industry and the growth in the city, probably something we would seriously look at with the redevelopment of the Greendale area that might happen there with our burn code program.
The other piece that I was interested in is the, with construction, we're looking at Dougherty High School going into craft, sorry, craft labor in construction. Are we tying that into the engineering or is that going to say a separate area?
It's a separate area, but just like anything else, we can have cross-discipline. There actually is going to be an area in Dougherty High School that they call the pit, that there'll be pouring concrete forms. And everything, when you say construction, we're not necessarily limiting to and thinking of building houses. But the craft laborers, peoples that are setting it up, we're talking about, you know, blueboarding, there's all the variety, everything that they have that they can do in a general project with the construction and with those craft labors on a daily basis that you see all the unions coming in when they're building all these big businesses.
Right.
All little pieces of that. So that is all part of that program.
That's, that's what I grew up in and that's why I'm asking. Okay. And then lastly, the, let's see, the weaving of unions and articulation agreements. Are we looking at that? Are we moving forward, working with the unions in our city, speaking to the key people that can let us know about articulations for our students?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair. That's a wonderful question. I am not aware of any articulation at this moment, but that's not something that we cannot investigate. I know we've had multiple conversations, we just haven't done anything formalized. So we'll take note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I can tell you through experience that, that was one of the pieces that I had personally worked on for, for a number of years. And we had unions that would come in to speak to our students in different areas. And we were able to then build internships. They would then have apprenticeships and we had the articulation agreement. And this became something that was not only a pathway, but very successful for now business people in the city who are not only building homes, but working for other companies and so on. So it has definitely been advantageous to everyone that was working in this. They also have come in to speak to the students to let them know that it's not a standard position. You can have a variety of talents and learn different areas that will be beneficial to all of them, including the fact that running a simple checking account is part of what they need to know to run a business and be able to work and be successful in our community. So thank you very much for this evening. I'm sure I'll have some ideas in addition to this, but the data on this is very important. So I would like to see that as soon as possible, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Millman.
Thank you. I closed my eyes and I picture Mrs. O'Leary in history, giving us this very dramatic thing and tying it back to Vietnam, which wouldn't happen today, but that's what I was picturing in your thing. Several, several questions. We, most of the unions now do recognize coursework that happens at the high school level. And so they're sometimes given credit towards the apprenticeship hours or one of the apprenticeship learning hours, not for on-the-job, but for learning. And obviously, if they're in an apprenticeship or internship, then they get credit for those hours. I also wanted to clarify before a couple of other comments. Engineering, the, every one of our Chapter 74 programs is open across the district. So is, correct, through the chair?
Dr. Morris?
Through the chair, yes, it is. But not every school has the same Chapter 74 program.
Yes, that, understood, through the chair. But that means that we actually do have access across our district to an engineering program. And I know at Tech, we're very, we are making sure, there's so many kids from each quadrant that is getting in. And I'd ask the question, are we doing that with the programs at South, the programs at Dougherty and the programs at North?
Dr. Morris?
So through the chair, there are lotteries for those programs at South, Dougherty and North.
And are we measuring how many students we're getting from each quadrant in those programs?
Through the chair, we have not done that yet, but that is, I, we did speak about it last night at TLSS, there is a stakeholder group.
Yeah.
Looking at all lotteries, all programs. And we'll be having some recommendations to bring to you all by the end of the year.
Awesome. Thank you. I have maybe similar to Member Biancaria's question, specific questions about, first of all, the 1,300 teachers, that is amazing that you have already touched that many in this program so far. That was, I kind of woke up and said, wow, that's pretty cool. I'd like to see some data on the time in the shops, particularly in the comprehensive schools for each shop. And have we improved? I think that's something that we should, and I'd probably make a motion that we make sure we're measuring time in the shop for all the shops in the comprehensive high schools. I think that what I hear a lot out there is that families, it's a, it's a, it's, it's great and it's tough, because they actually understand that we have a lot of cool things going on, but they don't know how to get the information. So I'd also look to Mr. O'Brien, and I know we keep being told we're going to see this new website. So hopefully that is coming sooner rather than later. And I don't know if we have any new dates on when we might see a new website.
Through the chair, we're looking at May. I don't know if it's the beginning of May or end of May. Let's say end of May, just to be safe.
Okay, thank you. That's great. And I know we'll have a lot of good information on that. CTE can, which programs do we have, which CTE programs do we have? Not CVTE, CTE.
Through the chair, our director, Julian Gamache, is here and I'll ask her to come up to speak on that.
Thank you. If we go to the definition presented by the Department of Ed, the programs in our comprehensive high schools are CVTE. And we don't have any at the moment that technically meet that definition of just a CTE program.
District-wide?
That I'm aware of.
That's interesting. That's interesting. Okay. Through the chair, is that something that we're, is anybody paying attention? Are we thinking that that might offer opportunities for students in our district?
Madam Superintendent.
Yes, absolutely. We'll be looking into that as part of this entire K, pre-K through 12 continuum and where we still have some gaps and how we can fill those. So absolutely. And, and just to put an exclamation point on it, this all tucks into what Dr. Morris put up, it's part of our strategic plan, right? So it's in there, it's that equitable programming.
Thank you.
So, Member Johnson, since you have standing?
Yeah, I'm, I just sent, through the chair to administration, since Member Millman opened up the door in regards to that. So when you're coming back soon, towards the end of the year, in regards to some recommendations for next year around lotteries and how we're gonna, how soon can we go back? Because what I would tell you is what I'm hearing in TLSS and kind of questions I'm hearing now, I have a lot of concerns with where we could be trying to go with this. So I think it may be some time to work this all out. So I'm just, I think we're going to need time to get that to the floor, to have further discussions and may need to go back and be worked out. I'm not sure how, how soon we could get that done.
And Dr. Morris?
Through the chair, we won't have any recommendations to bring forward till June. And any changes to the lottery, we'd have to notify Desi by October. So we're certainly going to bring it back to, to the school committee to review, to discuss. And we'll bring recommendations and you all bring decisions. So we'll be happy to hear, we'll be happy to present and hear from you. Through the chair, if I could just add to that a little bit. So we will, any recommendation that comes forward for any So we will, any recommendation that comes forward for any changes in lottery process and/or CTE programming will not be for next school year. There's not enough time, to your point, member Johnson. What we will be bringing forward are, or any recommendations for next school year will go into the budgeting process and that will be most specifically for existing pathways or ones that you already know about. Any other changes, this is, it takes much more time because we have to include all the different people and you get information out to families for enrollment around November and December, right? So we wouldn't be ready for next school year, any changes, but it'll be for the following year. I don't know if that helps to kind of put a bit more parameters around it.
Thank you. Member Penanda?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Just wanted to say that Worcester Public Schools has been recognized as a leader now for a long time for their pathway in their curriculum with early college as well as the Chapter 74 programs actually going into high schools. Not in many urban schools do they have the Chapter 74 programs in the comprehensives as well as that opportunity to have the innovative pathway programs for every single high school at Worcester Tech. So I think these programs are not new that are listed here. I really do like the document that was put together here because it makes everything very clear of all the opportunities that Worcester Public School does provide for students. I had just a few questions. I think earlier and maybe in January, we talked about that additional program at North High School that was supposed to be a Chapter 74 program. I think we were gonna look at, looking for instructors for that program, maybe through the fire department, and yet I don't see it listed here on the sheet. So are we still considering that program at North because I know a lot of work was done to prepare for that program there, you know, getting the ambulance and et cetera. So I'm wondering why that program is not listed here and what's going on with that.
Dr. Morris?
So through the chair, I'm going to invite Dr. Tatum up to the table. He's been working on that program up at North High.
Dr. Tatum? You can just go up there, you can go over here, either one.
Through the chair, the EMT program at North High School is not a Chapter 74 program. We have looked into how we're going to navigate this moving forward because we do feel like it's a great opportunity for our students at North High School. We've spoken to, actually taking your suggestion from a couple of school committee meetings ago, spoken to firefighters who provided us with more information and we reached out to a different company and we're looking into if that's going to be a possibility for next year at North High School. But we're looking at other options as well because we do feel it's a valuable component to the North High community, but it is not a Chapter 74 program.
So that might be, you know, an example of a CTE program that we could look forward to. Many of the CTEs don't exist anymore because we moved them to Chapter 74 programs in the high schools. That's what happened to them, like auto became, you know, South High became diesel. So some of those programs moved into 74, partially because there's more reimbursement for the district for a Chapter 74 program than there was for a CTE program. So I'd be interested in just keeping an update on that for North.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, Dr. Tatum, if you could also share the age criteria that has a little bit of a challenge to it for our youth and we want to be able to manage expectations, so if you could share that.
Of course, through the chair. One of the criteria for the EMT certificate is that students cannot take the exam until they're 18 years of old, 18 years of age. So we have many of our seniors who could be on the younger side, who would like to take that course and then there's a wide gap in terms of when they turn 18, which can be an issue as well for them to prepare for that exam.
So I think the, they can prepare for it, but they have to wait till they're 18 to take it.
Through the chair, that's my point. So if they don't turn 18 until December and the course is completed in June, that's six months time where they're not in class, they're not working on that, which would potentially limit the success that they would have on that exam.
I know that was an issue in Quabog also, but they were able to work that out and seven students that graduated actually got on the fire department. So I think it's something to actually, it might actually be a good place to call to ask how they worked that out.
Once again, we'll look at all options that are available for North High and our students.
Thank you. My second question was about guidance, so meaning guidance counselors. The challenges that, you know, that I found and still find is that they really need to receive a lot of training too on what are the options, right, for students. And one of the things that we're concerned about was how does that eighth grade guidance counselor really prepare parents and students for the options that can happen in ninth grade? Because there are so many options. And the other part of it is, like for a simple thing like you have on curriculum here, like how many ninth graders are taking, have taken Algebra I when they were in the eighth grade? Because we were able to show some research that actually shows that that decision in eighth grade of where kids are going to go in ninth grade actually affected the choice of math courses all the way through grade 12. So I think another important component of this is really looking at how do we train our eighth grade guidance counselors and especially that question about in the area of math.
So through the chair, Chris Chistonas oversees guidance in the district, so I can throw that question over to him, but I can speak directly to the math question. So algebra in eighth grade, if a student does not take algebra in eighth grade, there is still a way for them to reach higher level math courses such as calculus. And we have a pathway developed for that, which would be that they would double up in one year instead of having to have, had that experience in eighth grade. So not all students who have had algebra in eighth grade feel that they're ready for Algebra II. So the ninth grade plan is geometry, the 10th grade plan is then?
Algebra II.
Algebra II, and then we go to higher level math. But there are multiple ways for students to achieve different levels of math. And we're looking right now at math scores and we're looking at pathways and we're also trying to create options for students with math so that not every student has to go through the same program and still allow students to have the success of the higher level math if that's what they choose.
I'm familiar with doubling, you know, doubling up for students when they get to the high school. It's just easier not to have to double up and that is just key. Also, the sixth grade teacher is another point of conversation, right? Because they're recommending what math they take in seventh grade. So in this plan, I'd love to hear what training we're doing for sixth grade classroom teachers who may not know, you know, all of this that you have on this great form that you did and also what's happening for eighth grade, including guidance counselors. Because there's so much that's offered once you hit ninth grade, there's so many opportunities. Not only do parents need to know it, I think staff also need to know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Great job tonight?
Through the chair, I just, I want to respond to the question about the guidance counselors. And so we, we too saw that the guidance counselors really were not working collaboratively across the district. So we started pulling them in this school year to really share best practices and learn with and from each other. We do that for teachers, we do that for principals, we should be doing that for guidance counselors. That hadn't been the past practice. What I would, and so that has started to happen and that will continue to happen under Mr. Chistonas' leadership. As, in addition to that, I would say that when it comes to what a student chooses to do going into high school, so much of it is about engaging with the families and making sure that the families know what is available to them and being very thoughtful about bringing our families in and not leaving it up to the child to tell the parent, right? And so so much of that has to do with getting our website up to date, but also our family and community engagement approaches and making sure that families that for various reasons may not be reaching out to us, that we're reaching out to them. I would say that that doesn't have to happen just through the, a guidance counselor at the middle school. I think it is also part of engaging with our families in lots of different arenas that we have them and pointing out to them what they, how they can get access to things. Our wraparound coordinators are huge in this work. And so we have lots of different ways by which we can connect our families to what we have in our district and we need to do that for them because what it ends up being when we don't do that is we rely on who they might know in the community and that's not fair to a family, especially a family that may be newer to Worcester and may not know how to navigate. So that is something that we started and again, our Family and Community Engagement Office and our wraparound coordinators have been instrumental in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So you can follow this item and those in favor, opposed or ordered. Great job tonight, much appreciated. Keep up the good work. I'm forward to your additional reports coming up. Okay, we have the Student Advisory Committee items. We have several of our students are here tonight. And if you want to introduce yourselves anyways before we get going, and what school are you from?
My name is Claire Vasquez. I'm from Claremont Academy.
Good evening. My name is Clarissa Alexis and I will be representing North High.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas and I'll be representing Burnco High.
Thank you for being here tonight. And with the item tonight is to explore and provide resources that will support teachers, staff with their mental health, such as counseling service, mindful training, as well as support groups that discuss stress management and coping skills that will support a positive school environment.
So we just wanted to bring to light about enhancing the role of guidance counselors to motivate them to introduce students to prospective and heighten their likelihood to get admitted into colleges because I've seen from my perspective at my school that many students have struggled with college acceptances, the process of getting into colleges and how stressful it is. And it's mainly because communication with guidance counselors is sometimes difficult or they're not acknowledging as many as opportunities as they should. And we believe that it is vital and important to ensure fairness and prevent those students that seek success from being left out of disadvantages. So maybe require consistent follow-ups with students to develop college preparation strategies and I believe they will increase graduation rates, accomplishment rates, accomplishment rates and would be beneficial to both the school and the students.
Thank you.
We also believe it's important to acknowledge that there are students who oftentimes feel excluded and overlooked when it comes to the opportunities that, for growth and advancement in our schools. While it's true that students have a responsibility to prioritize their education, it's equally important for guidance counselors to ensure that these students are all informed about these opportunities. When students are left in the dark, it can create a sense of unfairness and disappointment which can in turn negatively impact their motivation and engagement in their studies. Therefore, it's crucial for counselors to be provocative in sharing information about the opportunities that we do have available to every student in our schools in order for them to get an equal chance to pursue their goals and reach their full potential.
Thank you. Mr. Sutton?
Through the chair, to begin, that was not our item for this, that's the one that we were going to do next week. I don't know if Mary Jane had voiced that to you, but that's not what they have on the agenda, at least the one that I was given. So I'm going to do the one for this agenda item instead of the one that we're going to do next week and I'm sure I'll be more than back. Should I reread the item quickly?
So, okay, go ahead, Mr. Sutton.
So do we want to do this item or do we want to, we have to do this item?
I think your item's not on the agenda. Is, no? Can I get?
No, because the item that's currently on the agenda is to explore and provide resources that will provide, support teachers and staff with their mental health, such as counseling services.
Okay, go ahead.
No, theirs was guidance counselors, that's the one we were going to plan on doing next week. No. That was, sorry, that was like a, we had a couple going on this week, so that was one of the ones that came out. Through the chair, we want to thank you for your focus on the wellness of students over the course of this school year. It has been very helpful to schools, for students to have additional support in our schools that focus on their mental health. But we are also worried about our teachers. There are teachers who could really need some support as well. And they don't just need some snacks in the teacher's lounge. I mean, just look at the Instagrams, we'll see a bunch of memes about teachers being over in March. We need a, we need to provide something to support teachers and staff with their mental health, such as counseling, mindfulness training, or support groups. This will give teachers a chance to discuss stress management and coping skills that will support a positive school environment. The staff's wellness directly impacts their ability to teach us. Worcester Public Schools teachers and staff don't have coping strategies for their own life shifts, they cannot support students in dealing with theirs and cannot do their jobs effectively. If the staff has been better trained with things like how to de-escalate situations and stress management, then not only do this teachers benefit, but so do the students. We want our schools to be safe and welcoming environments and we cannot have that with stressed-out teachers who aren't in the headspace of dealing with these kids, with kids. Please consider creating opportunities for all members of our school communities to answer the call to action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Much appreciated. Okay, anybody else? Nice job tonight and we will send that to teaching learning. Want to do it with administration, is that? Okay, we can do that for report back. Okay. Send that to administration. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Next item is N. We can take those collectively on the finance items, roll call. Do you have an item? Member Millman?
I just wanted to ask a question, but I'm not sure if we, maybe we'll have an answer. On the CTE grant, on the Perkins Grant, I've just got CTE in my head. On the Perkins Grant for $92,000, there's something called EDU Ready 360, CTE 360 Platform. And I was wondering if that was a scheduling platform or what, if you could tell us what that is? Through the chair.
So it is a platform that is going to allow us to bring together and be used by a large number of programs. So it will allow us to do some competency tracking for all of the Chapter 74 programs. It's going to bring in to co-op the ability to communicate easier with the employers and the students in their scheduling and hours and reporting back. It does a lot and unfortunately, I'm definitely not the person, the expert in that area, but it does a lot and it's going to benefit multiple programs, both up at Worcester Tech, the comprehensive high schools, the cooperative education programs, the ICP programs as well. So it's, it's just something we're really excited about too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you have a call to do in a roll call?
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Veninda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Millman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have O four dash thirty-seven to approve an easement to Verizon. We have O four dash thirty-seven to approve an easement to Verizon for property located at 299 Highland Street. Motion is to approve, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Bernanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. I'd request administration provide a report and reference to funding in necessary areas and provide therapy dogs at school sites. Member Biancaria?
Thank you. This came about from a couple of weeks back, there was a article and also on our Spectrum News discussing how terrific the therapy dog was. Her name is Honey. She's a three-year-old Labrador Retriever. And this dog is up at South High School under the 365Z Kindness Educational Program. They helped provide this particular Labrador. So 12 years ago, Pollockava, former chief of police Ed Gardella and Reverend Wright worked on this, and then it moved into President Rosemary Ford and her late husband Paul to then become 365Z. So the philosophy of this commitment is kindness is carried out on a daily basis and community experience. And that's what stuck to me because I feel as though we are looking at something that absolutely has brought a tremendous amount of joy to a lot of students. And to look at one dog to make that much difference, I think we need to look at our budget and what our plans are and partners that can make this grow into every high school having the availability to have this type of a dog, therapy dog. It's a lot of work, but we have to look at the budget. So what I'm asking administration is, I understand this is going to finance and operations, which I am on with Molly and Kathy and, I think that's it. But I look forward to what is brought from administration so we can look at what the dollar amount is on each of the animals, what the training is and the years that are put into this. Because from what I understand, it takes probably 18 months to 24 months to train this animal. And then you have to have a staff member that's willing to take this animal and this particular dog does stay at their home and so on, not obviously at night, school vacation and so on. But the community experience from this has truly worked very well as a therapy dog throughout South High School. So I've heard nothing but good things. I haven't heard any drawbacks besides the dollar amounts. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can, in the future, either find partners that would be interested in helping us with this, go back to 365Z as Kindness Educational Program. If they are looking for another high school that they can then work with and come up with a Labrador dog that can create the same environment for this. But I think we, we had a crisis about a month ago and, well, a few weeks ago in the city. And I, I would have loved to have been able to have a dog go and visit for a couple of days at that particular school that was truly affected by this. Not that we all could have used it. It did affect every resident in the city, but the kids at the, one particular school certainly could have used this type of Labrador dog as a therapy dog for a couple of days. So I, I, that's why I want to look to expand this program. But we do need to cover the cost, the experiences, and what the labor is that goes into having a success with this. So I look forward to having this item in the committee.
We will send that, ma'am superintendent?
Through the chair. Concur with you 100%. Want to add that what we will also bring in, because what we've been looking at is it's, it is fiscal, but it's also policy. And so we want to have both of those components in place so we will be, we'll bring a big kind of package forward.
Excellent. I'm, I'm, like I said, I, what I'm looking for at this point is that type of arrangement so then we can start to talk to people and talk to other programs that perhaps would like to join in and work collaboratively with Worcester Public Schools to then have the dogs here at other sites.
Okay, so we'll send that-
So I look forward to that discussion.
Send that to finance, all those in favor or opposed, so order.
Thank you.
Next item is request administration provide a report and reference to homeschooling, including numbers of participants and grade levels. Miss Biancaria?
I, I ask that we receive this information back no later than the end of May. And the reason I ask for this is because during the summer, we as school committee members have parents who approach us, call us, and are interested in homeschooling. And the process always has some tweaks in there every year. So I'm hoping that we're able to discuss it prior to summer so we have our information and we're able to then have some communication with people who do question this. I know that in years past, we've had different meetings in the standing committee meetings with parents that have come in to tell us what has worked and what has not worked. If we would like to do that, that's up to the administration, but it's more or less looking at what the data is and what the process is for this. And just to make a note to our clerk of school committee, when this item is on the agenda, if you could please inform me because I would like to attend, this is a committee I am not on.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll send that to teacher and learning. All those in favor, opposed, so order. Next is the interim report of other post employment benefits. Hope everybody took a gander and it's only one and a quarter billion dollars, so, and the schools represent over half of that, so. Member Mailman?
Can we, can anyone through the chair to maybe Mr. Allen or the superintendent? What percentage of our employees have we made the change with for the first year? So a certain amount of our unions, but covering how many of our employees roughly?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, we just did a report on this. And again, it was new employees have hired after their ratification. I don't have the exact number, we can make it available when this appears on standing committee, but it was somewhere under 100 or just over 100 employees. It's a, it's just the new employees in the groups that have ratified that provision so far, but we can make that as part of the-
No, that's okay. That's a relatively small, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So send that to teacher and learning, others in favor. I'm sorry, finance. Others in favor, opposed, so order. Request administration provide a report on school meals and nutrition, including current vendors used by the Worcester Public Schools. Member Guardiola, can you do as good as the students?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the purpose of this item is to obtain information about the availability of kinds of meals that we're serving and their nutritionist value. We're lucky to, you know, have such a diverse population here in the city of Worcester, but with that comes some of the amazing cuisine right here in our own backyard. But some of these families that we heard have dietary or religious restrictions, and I think we need to make sure that we're encompassing that, as we heard from both parents and students today. And I really want to applaud the, the young women from Forest Grove who wanted to present. They actually reached out to me directly via email saying that, you know, they have some concerns about the food they're being served. They really wanted to address it to this body, which was very admirable, I'll be honest with you. So we should be, in my mind, we should be sourcing locally. We, we have the ability to do so here in, in Worcester in the area. Fun fact for everybody, Worcester County has more farms than any other county in the Commonwealth. So we should be purchasing from these local farms so we give our students the most nutritionist food possible. Currently, the Worcester Regional Food Hub is one of a few who actually aggregate some of this food and actually sell it to local institutions, which is public schools, higher ed, hospitals. 68 other districts in the Commonwealth utilize just the food hub, all the way from Andover to Springfield. And they actually have this food aggregated from these local farms and actually distributed to local institutions, including public schools. Every other school around us, Auburn, Millbury, Shrewsbury, all utilize some sort of aggregator, specifically like the Worcester Regional Food Hub. What I would just say is, you know, all the science shows that a nutritious student is a more alert student. We have the opportunity to make some real change, and I'm interested to hear from the administration how we can work together, the school committee, administration, parents, students, to actually look towards getting better quality food. I would continuously hear, I know we all get emails about the quality of food, it's a big deal, but also the nutritionist value. So I'm just asking for a report on the types of meals that are offered and who we're purchasing from. Thank you.
Thank you. Send that to the administration. Those in favor? What are we doing? Member Mailman?
I'm just, through the adminis, through the chair, administration, through the chair. I support this item. I know that we spent a lot of time last year in subcommittee and in different groups talking about this. I don't see Donna here tonight to speak to it. I, my, what I learned last year was that we have a lot of efforts that are happening to try to accommodate some of these needs, but haven't gotten there yet, obviously. But I am curious about the farm and don't know if the superintendent or Brian Allen might be able to answer about the local sourcing.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So generally, we purchase from many of the farms directly, but we certainly look to potentially expand that as much as we can, whether through the food hub or other entities. But certainly will look, as we are now developing the, a food innovation program to improve the menu quality, to whatever extent we can bring in more local foods, however the sources, we certainly would do that. But we do access local farms, usually we're purchasing direct from those farms.
Thank you very much.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. I would just ask actually if this could go to FOG instead of administration because there are some other current items in FOG, so I think it would make sense to take them together, if that's okay with Member Guardiola.
Yes, that's, that's fine.
Okay. So send that to finance, all those in favor, opposed, so order. Member Biancaria?
Thank you for that suggestion. I was actually going to ask that because of the fact that everything for a number of years was set up where we didn't have a cost for the cafeteria food. Are we still in that status presently?
Mr. Allen?
Sorry.
Through the chair. Yes, the school nutrition program is still 100% supported by its own revenue.
Okay. All right. So we, the reason I say it should go to finance and operations is the fact that if we did branch out, there probably will be some cost at some point in time because it will be set up differently. But I'm certainly open to any suggestions because this is a long history of, we're not happy with this. So, and it's unfortunate, but you're not going to make everyone happy, but even at a neighborhood meeting the other night, someone had brought up nutrition. And I was happy to see the item was put on by Alex and not me, so that's good. But I look forward to the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh. Member Roy?
Hi. Through the chair to administration. The wonderful children that were here today from Forest Grove obviously are very concerned and want to be involved in the deciding process. My question is, could it be possible to form a committee with students from the various schools so that they would have some input into what types of food and nutrition they are looking for, seeing that they're the target audience? Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So we've talked about this already. We certainly have thought about using the superintendent's student advisory council, but that's high school students, but we're also thinking about bringing in menu options and choices to both middle school and to parent groups for them to sample the new choices once we begin implementing those.
Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Roy. So send that to finance, all those in favor, opposed, so order. Okay. Request approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan. Any questions on that? Okay. Listen, I was on, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Bernanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the meeting. There is a tomorrow. I know that President Wong, Grace Wong's being sworn in, inauguration, WPI is tomorrow, so wish her congratulations and, and thank you. Member Bernanda?
I think there's an, just an error on the announcements. April 21st is a Sunday. So I don't think that might, that's the right date for teaching and learning. I think it's the 22nd.
Okay. Okay, so we'll edit that. Madam Cork? And motions adjourned, those in favor, opposed, so order.